I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the symbol of our friendship among our united cultures.
Father God, we humbly come before you today to ask for your guidance as we make decisions. We pray for this great country that we all live in and call home. We know biblically that a house divided shall fall, so I pray that we can come together on common ground and be reminded of what, who we serve and why we do it. Father, I ask prayers for all the military and servicemen who defend this wonderful country. I pray for all the law enforcement firefighters who defend our counties and our homes. I pray for their safety. Above all, I just pray for the county and the citizens that we serve. I pray, pray that we're able to serve them the way they, they have asked us to be, to lead for them. Do this all in your name. Amen.
Okay.
A little bit comment. I would like to ask one thing that, subjects that we have, let's don't ask them over and over and over again. Let's talk about the subject and then have one person bring us the issue. Okay? Thank you.
Sit, stand, and follow the book. Okay. Sit or stand.
Okay. Thank you for your time. In April of last year, you voted to allow the search and rescue team to use the building at 5307 Buena Vista. This was greatly needed as the team was accumulating more equipment and had outgrown the space we had been using. Over the summer, team members cleaned out the accumulated trash that had been left behind by the previous tenants of the building. We cleaned up the building and the grounds. We took care of maintenance issues. We moved our vehicles and equipment out of the space at the fire service and into the building that you allowed us to use. We made use of the space to better organize our equipment, to make it more accessible when we had a search and rescue mission, so we could more rapidly respond. We used the money from our budget to hire an electrical contractor to make much-needed repairs to the building electrically. Now, I understand and I acknowledge that's not our money, it's the county's money that was provided by you for our budget, which we greatly appreciate. We installed a workshop to maintain our equipment, created a library of training material, and built secure storage for our radios, drones, and other electronic devices, keep them locked up so they wouldn't disappear, trying to better take care of items provided by the county funds. When we received word that you were allowing us to use the building, it was a great morale boost. This along with the approval of a generous budget which you made to, for us this year, again, which we appreciate, made us feel we had your support and that you valued our work. Finding out that the building was for sale without any discussion with us felt like a slap in the face, and I mean no insult to all of you. I asked, where should the team move for a new home when our building's sold? Assuming that it happens, how am I going to convince team members to fix up and maintain another building after they worked so hard to make improvements to the current building? I predict there will be trust issues, at the feeling that the value of their work is not being appreciated. They may think, why should they work hard to set up a new building if the county might just sell it out from under us? As already stated, the building is not ours, it is owned by Eddy County. And as the elected leaders of Eddy County, you have the authority to do what you feel is best for the citizens of Eddy County. I personally feel the best use of that property is home for the search and rescue team. I therefore respectfully ask that you vote no on approving the sale. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
I would just like to remind the people of Eddy County that you're actually very fortunate to have the level of search and rescue personnel that you have. I've been on teams all over the country and I've seen different ways of running teams, but this team is well organized, they have people who spend volunteer hours, they spend hundreds of hours. I'm on the canine team and we spend hundreds of hours and thousands of dollars of our own money to train the dogs, but also other members of the team has spent all this volunteer time to organize everything. And there have been over eighty people helped by our services, which are provided for free. And we, we appreciate all that you've done for us, but it is hard to, to keep morale up when something like this happens. So, oh, I did want to mention that we have dogs trained to the level, there's an IMAX movie out called Superpower Dogs, and we've had, Dr. Lark has trained several dogs to the same level as the dogs in this movie, and so have I. I have almost twenty years of experience training dogs for search and rescue, and she has over twenty years' experience. This is a, a unique asset that I think the county should just value. Thank you.
Could you state your name, please?
Dory Donovan.
I have always, back and call, as soon as any of the sheriff's department call, or police department call, the state's attorney general, I drop and close my practice, and I volunteer all my time. I feel like this is the second killing team. If you all are trying to get me to leave Eddy County, you're doing a damn good job.
Okay. Any other public comment?
My name is John Green. I've been training the dogs for about four, four years, and I, I don't really think anybody in this room or anybody else, if they know the true facts of why we're selling this building, if we're in a austere situation with all these hotels being built and the revenues of monies that are coming in here. For that matter, if we're such in a terrible austere situation, you know, this is really, as they say, you know, penny wise, but pound foolish when you look at the whole thing. We don't need fire departments, do we? But we'd rather have them than not need them than need them and not have them, correct? So, you know, what the commission don't see is that when the sheriff's department calls out and even our own director doesn't even know anything about us getting called out on cold cases, in which we help the city with cold cases. They don't see that, you know, we go out with over three hundred people with a sheriff when there was a drowning and our dogs alert in the general area right where those, that person was drowned, when they bring up the people with the scuba equipment the following day to help bring family closure. You know, when you look at the several other cities, Los Cruces, Albuquerque, you'll see the thousands of dollars that they have, and that's actually part of their fire department. When Mrs. Chapman had envisioned this, when that terrible accident happened over twenty years ago with a gas company, you will, you will have noticed that she had donated the ten million dollars for that whole thing, and her envision was for fire services and rescue, okay? And we were in that building. Of course, we all know what happened because of the ten million dollars mismanagement and flowing down the thing, and then the county ended up taking it over for a mere pittance, okay? So, three hundred thousand dollars, this county's money was taken to remove a rubble pile which was snake-infested. Wow, snakes in New Mexico, that's kind of ironic, in which they were going to, Mr. Eddie Mack was, we were promised we were going to make a closed containment center after that. That had never materialized, and I don't believe this new building will materialize. If you guys gave the green light to put a new building someplace, it would probably take two years with all the permits and, and contractors, you can't get anybody to work in this town because of the oil boom. So, I really think that they should seriously consider your decision on this, knowing the valuable service, because this is really not costing the county anything. So, when Dory Donovan's dog has an ACLS repair and blows out and it costs her four thousand dollars of our money, she doesn't blink an eye. Three months later, the same thing happens, she does the same thing. We just bought a dog for fifteen thousand dollars up in Idaho, it's one of a hundred in the United States, this live find, cadaver find, and the county has that dog avalanche find and scent trained. So, I respectfully ask that you reconsider your decision in this, in this decision-making process.
Any other comments?
The issue at hand is the, the selling of the search and rescue building at fifty-three oh seven Buena Vista. To me, it doesn't make any sense. If the adage is to say that selling the building is another option for the county, I know that Happy Valley Station One, following volunteer fire department, their building is two million dollars. So, if you're going to sell fifty-three oh seven Buena Vista for the appraised value, which is far less than that of Happy Valley Station One, it doesn't make sense to me. Another question that I still have not had answered is why? Why this building when the county is not essentially going to benefit from it? If, if the adage is to say that we need another option, we might as well consider all of the volunteer stations, that of the sheriff's department as well, because as they're all owned by Eddy County, as well as this building right here, it could be considered another option, but you and I both know that's not going to be feasibly possible. So, I would humbly ask you to reconsider and not sell the property because it doesn't have any value for the county. It has the value for the citizens for a single purpose, for search and rescue, such as, as of the each eleven fire departments in their own respective districts, as well as the sheriff's county for the entire county. Again, I humbly ask you that you reconsider and/or not sell that property because it brings a purpose to this county. Thank you.
Could I have your name, please?
William Cormack.
Any other comments? Okay. Moving on. So, we have Lexi Kessler from the assessor's office of fifteen years.
I'm going to wipe some of my body.
I need to get a group picture with him.
Do you want a picture? A group picture. We'll take a group picture.
Yes.
That's what I was saying. Right, for a group picture.
I did not. You did. That was what I thought.
I did.
It was an accident.
And I almost, I almost brought that up at the speech I was giving.
Well, don't do that. I'm not going to.
She would whip us bad.
Huh?
She would whip us bad.
It was a pretty fun deal. Because she had to clean all those up.
I will say she was very nice to the first couple of the judges.
Were you nice to her?
Of course I was. I was, I had my New Mexico county president hat on, so I had.
So, you had to be.
But, you know, I respect the position.
She hugged him on his neck twice.
She's the governor.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So, this is for IFB nineteen oh five. It was for cattle guard materials, construction, and maintenance for our county public works department. We did solicit this on December nineteenth, and we did receive sealed bids on the fourteenth. We received two bids. Two of them were, were received on time, we actually received one after the fact, so it was not considered, but the two that were received were D two D Industries and Haci Contracting. We do make the recommendation to award to both bidders, as D two D two only bid for three of the items, whereas Haci bid for a little bit more. However, considering the New Mexico preference that Haci had, D two D was still cheaper than Haci contracting on the items that were bid, so we do make the recommendation to award those items to both.
Do the, you say each one of them bid three separate items?
No, D two D bid three of the items, and Haci bid the first, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven items. The remaining items were not bid on either one, so Jason has made the decision we're going to include them in the annual maintenance bid that's going to be coming up.
The items that weren't bid were minor repairs to the cattle guards and cleaning out of the cattle guards, and neither one of those companies bid on that. That'll be a line item in our annual maintenance, it's something that our crews can continue to do. The items that were bid were the fabrication delivery of the actual cattle guards and the foundations.
Okay. And both of them bid that?
Yes, sir. They both did, did bid the fabrication.
And what, I guess, one of my questions is, why don't we just give it to the low bidder rather than to both of them?
Because D two D was actually the lowest bid on the three items that they bid. Even with the New Mexico preference that Haci had, they still were the lowest bid.
But they didn't, they didn't bid on all items.
They did not bid on all items. Neither did Haci, though, either.
So, so basically, we can't pick and choose?
Correct. If they met the requirements and they were the lowest bid, then they did what we asked of them.
Okay.
Correct. This also allows us options based on availability to fit our schedules of what we need, when we need it. So, if we call D two D being the lowest bidder and they can't meet our availability, our requirements, our needs, we can pick the phone up and call Haci.
Okay. Okay. Any questions? Oh, sorry, I have a question. Okay. Do you have a motion to accept the award?
I'll make a motion to accept the two bids for the cattle guards. And that have a number?
It's IFB nineteen oh five.
The item number nineteen dash zero five, cattle guard materials, construction and maintenance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Stane.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Okay. We have the trailing agenda. The commission meeting minutes for January the seventh. Is there any questions or changes proposed?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the commission meeting minutes for January the seventh, twenty twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? So, any questions? Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
I'm staying.
Wood.
Yes.
Okay. Expense approval report for December of two thousand nineteen. Any questions? Any comments?
I went, I went through the expense report and I didn't see anything look bad on there at all, so I thought everything looked good.
Larry?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Do you have a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the expense approval report for December twenty nineteen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Any questions? Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Okay. Purchase card approval list for December of two thousand nineteen. Any questions or items? Steve?
No, sir. No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to approve the purchase card approval list for December twenty nineteen.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second question. Any questions? Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Okay. Treasurers report, December two thousand nineteen. Laurie, through it. Do you have any questions or anything on it? Okay. Do I have a motion to accept?
We don't have to.
Oh, we don't have to? Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay. Lodger tax report, Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is for the second quarter's DFA lodger's tax report.
It's pretty similar to the first quarter that you guys just approved a couple of meetings ago. We did start off with a cash balance of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for this fiscal year. We're currently at two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in the lodger's tax. For the second quarter, for revenue, we did collect about twenty-six thousand dollars, putting us for a total of fifty-one thousand dollars in revenue collected for the fiscal year, and we did not have any expenses for the second quarter. Just to answer a few of the questions, I know Commissioner Crockett's not here, but there was a few questions asked last time on lodger's tax. The one Susan Crockett had, and I did get back with her, was the MRG for the Phoenix flight, or American Airlines. We did get ahold of them. That agreement that the county had with them did expire May of twenty eighteen. I guess they did have some changes in their upper management at American Airlines, and they decided not to renew that MRG contract, but they did say that the flight's doing well and hasn't been needed, they've been meeting their quota since then, so that, I think that answered Commissioner Crockett's question. Commissioner McCutcheon's question, I did reach out to Jolene, who is in charge of the lodger's tax up at DFA. She did confirm, yes, that we can use the monies on capital purchasing, but it has to be a government-owned tourist-related attraction that we could use those capital expenditures on. Of course, you could still use it for advertisement and tourism in general, but you can do construction, but it has to be for a tourist-related government building.
Can we send notices out to all the, the nonprofit groups throughout the city, inform them of, of, we have money for lodger's tax use to advertise and stuff, events and stuff that are coming up in Eddy County, and, and maybe get suggestions on some capital projects that we might be able to use that on that are tourist-related?
Yeah, I don't see why we couldn't. I can probably run it by Wes and then through the lodger's tax board, I'm sure they might be the ones that would do that, but I'll put a note down to do that.
Yeah. I think it's important, we need to, you know, we need to be using that to promote Eddy County, and so I would like to see something like that.
And I know the other question that you had, Chairman, was the money reverting back in two years. So, the reason I had made that statement because actually on the lodger's tax report, could you scroll down to that next page so I could show them? I think it's on the first page here. Scroll a little bit more. It's at the bottom of the page here. Okay, right here. Where it says cash balance, see the two hundred and thirty-five, seven sixty-four, it says note, two years maximum carryover before money must be spent. So, we were always told that you have to spend that money within the two years. Well, I did reach out to them and confirm, because your question was, does it revert back to the state? And I said, I'm pretty sure it does. They said, no, that after looking at, I think they quoted me an NMAC citation, it's their belief that it will not revert back to the state, but she could not tell me anything past that. She said, consult your legal counsel as to what, what the money, where the money would go after that, but I'm assuming it would stay with us. I'm assuming that's just an FYI or a recommendation to make sure you spend your money and not to carry it over year after year, but it will not go back to the state, she said.
We have our legal counsel right here. What happens?
It's not real clear what happens to it, and you know, if you leave it there, that's exactly the step that will be taken by the state.
We need to figure out.
Yeah, we need to find a way to use that money.
So.
But I think if, if you had a steady program that showed that you were actively, and it wasn't just.
Tort it.
Yeah.
Our problem is, it's just building. You know, we need to use it, we need to show that we're promoting Eddy County, and so we need to find ways to do that, whether that's through the horse council, up in Artesia, or different programs that we have.
So, maybe some of the things that we did when we went to the state legislation and promoting the county, we could use those kinds of funds for things like that.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I know, sitting on the lodger's tax, we do everything we can to spend it.
Oh, I know.
We bet, yeah, you've been there. Yeah, so, I mean, I think, I think the lodger's tax board is looking at some magazines and things like that, but.
I think that one of the problems has been in the past, I don't think that there's been a big push to spend the money, and I think that, you know, one of the best, one of the best assets we have is, is to advertise Eddy County, and I think that's what we need to do.
That's what was done years ago. We had a marketing individual that helped direct the county, I mean, we paid that person to, to advertise in magazines and get in newspapers, and we haven't done that in years, but that's what used to be done with a portion of the money.
You know, I think that we need to promote things like bring different types of establishments in, whatever that is. Yes, Wes?
David. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, CAS was, had mentioned a, a marketing firm, and that was approved probably three meetings ago, which was, we have a meeting every quarter. The problem was, the marketing group never got us a contract. They are actually advertising for us, we've seen it online, and we're getting billed for it, but I cannot pay those until we have the contract from them.
Can we follow that up?
Yeah, we have, we are monthly. Every time we get a bill, we call them and say we need that contract in place. They've switched hands as far as who's overseeing that, probably five or six times, and they start getting a contract prepared for us, and then that person leaves, and then somebody else comes in, and I know IES has talked to probably seven or eight different people over there, but we will, I'm, I'm, what I'm hoping is that number on that bill's going to get so high that it's going to catch somebody else's attention that's up higher than them, and they're going to say, hey, we need to get, get this taken care of, but.
If I, if I need to help you meet with them or something to, to get that moving?
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Right. So, I think it's up to about fifteen thousand right now, and, and they've done, they've actually done the, the marketing for us, it's just, I've got to have a contract in place with them in order to get a PO. Right?
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
So you mentioned we can use it for construction. However, it has to be tied to an exact, like a building, to promote a single building?
Mm-hmm.
So.
A tourist-related building, so like we couldn't do it on the detention center.
We have a lot of tourists close here. There's a lot of come and go in there.
Kind of tourists.
So what are, what are, if we decide to do signs at the entrance of the county, would that be promoting Eddy County? That's no big deal?
And put a monument up in the middle of the detention center so that.
Oh.
Go look at it.
One of the things that we could probably use is, one of the things that we're talking about in Santa Fe is when we have projects and stuff. I'd like to see big Eddy County signs that says, another project by Eddy County, what the contractors and the size of the contract and stuff, because it promotes our improvements of our roads and stuff in Eddy County. I'd like to see that. You know, you see them, the NMDOT puts them out all the time. I'd like to see Eddy County doing that same thing. We kind of talked about it up in Santa Fe, and I just think that that's a good promotion tool to let people know the projects and stuff we're working on, because a lot of times they go through a project, they don't even think about it. But if we advertise that, hey, this is another Eddy County project, this is how we're spending your money, your tax dollars to improve the roads and stuff in Eddy County, I think that that's a big benefit to the whole county.
Sir.
Okay, anything else? Any other comments? Okay, moving, do we need to approve that?
Yes.
Okay, that's one we do need to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the lodgers tax report?
Make a motion to approve the FYI 2019-2020 second quarter lodgers tax report.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Question? No questions, call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. December 19 revenue report, Roberta Smith.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the December 2019 revenue report and the budget versus actual for that matter, I'm going to kind of go over it quickly because I'm going to discuss it more in depth in the mid-year review, so, but you're still welcome to ask questions if you'd like. So for December 2019, for gross receipts, the county collected 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars for GRT. For oil and gas production and equipment, we collected 7.3 million. So just keep in mind, the majority of that was for the oil and gas equipment check that we received, and it's significantly higher than what we've always received. We normally receive around 2.5 million dollars every year, and this year we received a huge amount. It was 4.3 million dollars. So for gross receipts tax, right now, so far, we've collected 10.2 million as of December 2019. And for oil and gas production and equipment, we've collected 18.8 million dollars total. That's all-inclusive with everything. And like I said, we did receive our oil and gas equipment check, which totaled 4.7 million dollars. So I'll stand for any other questions if you have anything on that.
Any questions? Any questions, Steve?
No, sir.
Any questions, any comments?
A lot of comments, but it's a great report, yeah.
I'm assuming we need to approve this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a, oh, you did?
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve December 2019 revenue report.
Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any question? Call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes. Okay, budget versus actual.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the December 2019 budget versus actual, obviously we should be at 50% during that time. So for countywide revenue, we have collected 82.8% as of the halfway mark. So we collected 91 million of our 110 million as of December. And for the expenses, we have expensed 55 million out of the 127 million that was budgeted countywide. So quite a bit under at 44%. For general funds, general fund has collected almost 75% of its total revenue. Obviously, that is due to oil and gas and GRT, and a bigger portion too of property tax as well. For the expense side of general funds, we are still slightly over at 57%, but again, that's because of those transfers out. General fund transfers out $22 million, which is about a third of our general funds. So, but if you again look at every other department in that budget versus actual, there's maybe a couple that are slightly, slightly over that 50% mark, so all the departments are under where we should be budgeted. For road funds, again, they're about 97% collected for revenue, but the majority of that are transfers in from the general fund. And for expensive, expenses, they've only expensed about 26% of their overall budget. So I'll stand for any other questions if you have anything else.
Steve?
No, sir.
Larry?
I guess my question, it's hard for you to answer, but on the road fund, when are we going to start spending that? I'm sure we are, but I mean, what are, I guess you can talk about it in your report, but I'm curious as to what's coming up, and I'd like to make sure. I'm sure you're not going to end with not spending your money.
I don't want to speak for Jason, but I know that he is doing that road assessment. I know he wants to get that done. That's a priority, so he can then prioritize what needs to be, so I believe that's part of it.
We have several projects coming up. They're in our planning phase, and like Roberta said, we are waiting for the, we do have the data for the road assessment. We're kind of waiting for the plan to come in, because what I'm very afraid of is to go over here and fix one road when there's another one that needs to be prioritized above that. Now, with that being said, we do have Black River Village intersection coming up, that we've had a few changes on, but I'll report on that during my report. And we're going to also move some money over to Duarte Road, because that one's in dire need, that will take our, and I'll be bringing that request to you at one of our soon meetings, to expend the capital money, and we have several maintenance projects planned to have the money expended before the end of the year. So our two big line items, which are the maintenance and our capital, will be expended by the end of the year.
We spent the time getting organized and understanding, prioritizing. We're still finalizing the prioritization, and the roadwork season is approaching. So we've been doing the, get the potholes taken care of, get the must-do things straight away, and then, you know, we might have to come back and ask for more money. So, but thank you for.
Oh, I knew Jason was going to spend it. I want whoever's listening on the radio to understand we're not sitting on it as they're driving down a bumpy road, so.
As a matter of fact.
Money's going to be spent.
Absolutely.
As a matter of fact, the director of Public Works and I was out riding roads yesterday.
Yeah. What was that?
And on that note as well, Commissioner Henry, I did reach out to all the elected officials and department heads regarding their capital purchases for the year. And if they haven't already spent them, they are planning on spending them, so we will get all that spent. And there's reasoning for if they have not been spent. For example, fire service and the tower equipment we've budgeted, obviously that hasn't been spent. So there has been good reasoning for those that haven't spent it.
Okay, do we need to approve this?
Yes, please.
Okay, I call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve budget versus actual December 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? No questions, call for the vote.
McCutcheon.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Wood.
Yes.
Okay, fiscal year 2019, 2020 mid-year financial review, Roberta.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm just going to start going through these slides. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me, and we can go over it. So the first slide, if you want to go to the first slide, or technically, I guess it's the second slide. Yes, thank you. So we'll start off with a recap of the 2019-2020 original budget that was approved. We had a county budget of 109.8 million dollars that was approved. Out of that total salary and benefits, countywide came to 35.6 million dollars. We did include our step increases for the year, which came out to about 119,000 dollars countywide. We also still had remaining 20 vacant allocated positions that remained frozen. I know some of you weren't here back in 1617, but there were 29 frozen positions back in 1617, and there still remains about 20 of those. If we were to unfreeze all those, it would be about 1.2 million dollars. Those 20 vacant positions, there's still 10 positions for detention, there's four in general services, and there's six in the road department. That's what totals those 20 vacant positions. And then obviously, we came into the budget with the 16.3 million dollar surplus from fiscal year in 2019. And in the following slides, I'll go over how that money's been spent so far. Is there any questions on this?
Questions, Steve?
No, sir.
Questions, Larry?
No.
Can you go to the next slide, please? So for a recap of the general fund itself, this is not countywide, it's only regarding general funds. We did have a deficit budget that we approved of 9.5 million dollars. We had 53.9 million dollars in revenue that we budgeted, and 63.4 in expenses that were approved. Out of that, 28.8 million dollars were salaries and benefits for general funds. And we did award over 3.5 million dollars in capital for the general fund. And those are just a few of the bigger ticket items that we did award for capital at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then obviously, we had the Brinewell of the 1.3 million dollars. And just to give a quick breakdown of the 63 million dollars for general fund and expenses, like I said, 3.5 million of that is capital, 28.8 million of that was salary and benefits, and the remaining 31 million was operating out of that original budget. Of course, now the general fund is up to 71 million in expenses, according to the December 2019 budget versus actual. Can you go to the next slide, please? So what has happened so far this year? Can you scroll up just a little bit more? That's good, thank you. Now, if you remember, this slide was presented last year as well too, and the good news is this slide is about a third as long as it was last year. So we haven't, we haven't approved a lot that was above and beyond the original budget, but they were big-ticket items. So if you see down at the bottom, obviously, we had a surplus of 16.3 million dollars, and we did cover the deficit of 9.5. That left us that 6.7 million dollars. And the commission did decide in October of 2019 to move that surplus money to the capital improvement fund. So that money sits there in that capital improvement fund, and you'll see that there in one of the line items. There are a few other line items. Some of them are in the facilities department for the heat pumps for fire service, the coating system, and the building service agreements for detention. We did have three new positions that were approved after the original budget. Now, you'll see those amounts on the annual side, because the last two items for first and second quarter budget adjustments, those expenses are actually included in there for this year. So we just moved them over here to the annual, so you can see what the annual amounts are for those positions moving forward. And then, of course, we did an Arrowhead study with NMSU for 50,000 dollars, and then we had some radio money move over for the sheriff's department. All the rest of them were included, all the miscellaneous smaller adjustments were included in the first and second quarter budget adjustments. And you can see those pretty much net out to zero. That's not a lot that we spent out of general fund money. So can you scroll up just a little bit more? So out of the ending surplus, we've went over about 540,000 dollars over that 16.2 million dollars that we had, which in the grand scheme of things actually isn't a lot. At this point last year, that number was about 6 million dollars, if you remember, so. Do you have any questions on that? Can you go to the next slide?
Questions, Larry?
I don't have any.
So this next slide is still again what's happened so far this year. This is just regarding personnel. So we actually haven't had quite a bit of action here either. We've had a lot of reclassifications, but they haven't been tied to any money. As you can see, there's very few that have been tied to money. We did have three new positions. Can you scroll, I guess, down? There you go. Technically, four new positions. We did have two licensed social workers that were approved, the public and governmental affairs director, and the community service admin director. Now, of course, that position was already technically budgeted, but the amount you're seeing there is due to the increase as well as the severance package. Sorry, I forgot what I was saying. So those were the amounts that were not originally approved in the budget, so that's the amount you see. Then there was one pay increase for 15,000 dollars, and there was three over hires. So totaling going into next year, the commission has already approved about 626,000 dollars in personnel that will move to this New Year's budget. Any questions?
Steve?
No, sir.
Larry?
Can you go to the next slide, please? So where do we stand as of December 31st? We kind of already went over these numbers, but just real quickly. Countywide, we've collected 82%. We've expensed about 44%. General fund has collected over 74% and has expensed about 57%. If you see where the general funds, obviously, we've collected 42 and we spent 40. So as of right now, we have a surplus of about 1.2 million dollars if we were to end. Now, of course, if you take into account the amount we've spent over our surplus, that leaves us about 689,000 dollars. And if you remember, we came into this fiscal year, we started this fiscal year with a general fund cash balance of about 47 million dollars. As of December, I believe that cash balance was a little over 48 million. So that's where your 1.2 million dollars comes from. Can you go to the next slide, please? So for year-end revenue projections, so in regards to gross receipts tax, general fund GRT is currently 3.3 million dollars over budget. If we average about 1.5 million dollars for the remaining six months of this year, that would put us collecting about 19 million dollars. We have budgeted so far 13.8 million dollars in GRT. So if we did collect that, which I don't think is out of reach, we've been collecting on average anywhere 1.6 to 1.7 on average for GRT on a monthly basis. So hitting that 1.5, we'd end about 5.4 million dollars over budget for GRT. For oil and gas, and this is production equipment and royalty, so it's all-inclusive, general fund is currently 8.6 million dollars over budget. We have been averaging about 2.3, a little bit over 2.3 million dollars a month. So if we keep collecting that 2.3 million dollars, we'd be about 13.4 million dollars over, and our total number would be about 33 million dollars. So originally, when we did the original budget projecting oil and gas, we projected about 8 million dollars, I mean, 8 million, 8 million barrels per month at about 52 dollars per barrel. And for gas, I think we projected about 33 million units per month at about 3.6 cost per unit. The cost isn't what we undershot, it's so much the volume, because right now, we're producing about 12 to 13 million barrels per month and about almost 60 million units for gas. So with those new projections, it is right on target about to finish on that 33 million dollar mark. For property taxes, there was a discrepancy in my slide here. We have collected 11.4 million dollars as of December. which puts us at about 79 percent of total collections. However, it's not $4.6 million that we still have outstanding. The treasurer, according to the treasurer, and Lori can correct me if I'm wrong, she has about $3.5 million to still collect. On the budget side, we have about $3 million still left to collect. So if we collect that $3.5 that she's expecting, we'll be about $500,000 over on property taxes.
Okay. Any questions?
Any questions on that?
No.
No, sir.
I love it.
Can you go to the next slide?
I remember it looking good.
For the year-end expense projections, this is usually roughly around the same kind of projection every single year, only because historically, and it's pretty right on every single year, the county only expenses about 90 to 95 percent of their total general fund budget. And thanks to your elected officials and department heads, that's all due to them. Now, whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, you know, they tend to watch their budgets pretty good towards the end of the year. So based on the current general fund expense budget of $71.8 million, each percent is about equivalent to $718,000. So if we are under budget by about 5 percent, that's equivalent to about $3.5 million that we'll be saving on the expense side of the budget. And also, historically, the majority of that amount comes from your detention center only because usually they are far understaffed every year throughout the majority of the year. Now, sheriff used to be in that category, but not so much anymore. So are there any questions on this slide? Can you go to the next slide, please? So looking forward to fiscal year 2021, we are looking at a possible surplus of about $21.9 million. And this is how we get to that $21.9 million. For our GRT, we're looking at $5.4 million over. Oil and gas, $13.4. Your expense, we do anticipate about $3.6 million of expenses left on the table. And then, of course, $540,000 that we've already expensed over and above our surplus from last year. Obviously, every time this year, I always preach to you guys, it's one-time money for surplus, and we should be using it on one-time expenses. So going into next year, depending on the priorities of the commission and the direction of department spending, we can see where we can put the surplus money, if you guys want to spend that on capital, or if you guys want to save that for a bigger project. Can you go to the last slide, please? So just real quick, in summary, we only have, we're over about $540,000 of the remaining surplus from last fiscal year. The commission has committed about $626,000 in personnel costs to next year's budget. And so we are looking at a possible surplus of about $21.9 million going into next year. So I will stand for any other questions if you have anything else.
Questions, Steve?
No. Appreciate everybody watching their budgets so closely. You know, the 1 percent, $718,201, I think was... It makes a huge difference when everybody gets together and saves in his fiscal response.
Eric?
I don't have any.
Fantastic.
Good. Great.
Thank you.
I'm very happy.
Good job.
And this is just an FY, so it doesn't need to be approved.
Thank you, Roberta.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need to approve that?
No.
Okay, good deal. Approve, disapprove, three indigent burials. Veronica Paris.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
So I am seeking approval for the indigent burials for Denton Funeral.
Okay. Any questions, Steve?
No, sir.
If no questions, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve three indigent burial.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second question. No questions, call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Reclassify existing fiscal officer to accounting tech, Jason Burns.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we recently had a turnover in Public Works, and we'd request that a current fiscal officer position be reclassified as an accounting tech. This is a savings to the county for the year 58, 4688, which will be an annual savings of $21,716. We feel that this position is more in line with the direction and the duties that she'll be assigned to do. Or he, and we'd request approval to oppose this and hire this position. This position will specifically be assigned to projects and assist with permitting for the fiscal end of it.
Okay. Questions?
No, sir. No.
No questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve that reclassify existing fiscal officer to accounting tech.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Budget adjustment for state grant agreement A-19108, CAP 26th Street. Jason Burns.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we brought this before you, July 16th of last year, to approve the agreement with DOT, at which time Public Works was directed to wait and see if we were awarded any additional grant funding for the year or SERPO or any other means we were not awarded any other funding. This is the budget adjustment and the assigning of the funds for North 26th. We've assigned it to North 26th, coordinated with Mr. Davis, and we agree that that's a good spot for it to go as it meets all the criteria for the grant funding that we'll receive. And we can have this done, we're planning for the end of the...
We're just moving it from one line to the next.
Do what, sir?
So we're just moving it from one line to the next.
Well, and what this is also doing is this is the budget adjustment for the revenue end of it. We did not complete that with Roberta at the time because we did not know exactly how much revenue we would be receiving. So...
Questions?
No, sir. Where? Oh. This is for North 26th from...
We're going to do it from the highway all the way into the Artesia city limits.
Okay. Okay. I'm excited because this road, I drove up last night, and those shoulders are terrible. It's a, and it is a very, very busy road for Artesia, so... It's falling apart pretty fast, sir. Yeah, I'm really glad to see it.
We've done some preliminary engineering on it, and we have a good plan moving forward with it.
That's fantastic. I thank y'all for getting it done.
Call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget adjustment for state grant agreement A-19108, CAP 26th Street.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second question. Call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, Atoka budget adjustment, Joshua Mack.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So the Atoka Volunteer Fire Department's requesting to make a capital budget adjustment with their rollover cash from the fire excise in the amount of $65,000. So they're looking at trying to get a special response vehicle. And they're just working on pricing, so they're trying to get the money moved over so as soon as they can get it done, they can make the move to get it done before end of fiscal year.
Any questions?
It says light trucks, is that singular or plural?
Single. It's just the line item is trucks.
The line item is just light trucks. So this is what we discussed there and at the...
Yes, sir.
At the meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that we need to...
Make sure it's budgeted and everything's done accurately.
Okay. And what is a emergency response vehicle? What kind of vehicle are we talking about?
So basically, it's just a one... Sorry. I think they're looking at one-ton pickup with a camper, and it basically can carry anything from fire suppression to technical rescue equipment. They're trying to put more in one truck than having two or three different trucks to do the same thing. But Ryan's right here, and he can answer that specific...
Morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Chair.
My name is Ryan Zuniga. I'm the chief of Atoka Fire Department. Yes, what we're looking at is, right now, what we're using as a response vehicle are pickups and Tahos, and they hold a lot of equipment for a quick response, first on scene, before somebody can get to the department and pick up a bigger truck. If we can get to a vehicle to start extrication or medical care or get to a small fire, excuse me, this is what we're looking at, is just to do a truck that will hold more equipment safely and get us on scene a little faster and be able to serve the community. But yes, it will be a one-ton truck with a, what they call a camper-style utility bed with full boxes inside and out.
Tools equipped and a home...
Yes, sir. Fire suppression, EMS, and extrication tools.
Okay.
Where? I don't have any questions. Is this truck stay at the station, or is it one that...
No, no, that, it will be issued to a officer, more than likely a chief or assistant chief. And we can show response reports showing that those vehicles actually are getting on scene faster than the city departments or other volunteer departments. And like I said, with the equipment on hand, beginning extrication or small fires can be taken care of with that vehicle.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Atoka budget adjustment.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Second, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
He's going to have leather seats in.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to vote for him, he's got leather seats.
Well, I would love to go through the specs of the reason we picked these trucks. Yes, it does have leather seats. If you look at the breakdown, when we look at these trucks, leather seat package is about $400. The replacement seat covers that we have got in the past for either the vinyl or the cloth is about $600. And the leather tends to clean easier for our clean cab, which is any contaminants we get on the fire. They clean easier, and they last a little longer. So yes, leather seats, and there has been some questions about the packages we get. Well, if you look at getting a base model that does not have the high-output alternator to where when we add the lights and radios, that's an additional cost. Inverters to run computers and MDTs, that's an additional cost to add in. And then the stuff that you don't get from the factory is not covered under factory warranty. So then you have to go through and to have another company either do the warranty or you lose that cost. So yes, they are a little bit higher in the beginning, but adding stuff to it and trying the maintenance works out through the end.
I appreciate you being straightforward, and...
Yes, sir.
You know, I just can't, I just can't buy leather seats. Really, if it's your money, you can do whatever you want with it. But, you know, Ms. Smith on the corner down here, I can't spend her money for leather seats. So, I don't know, Sheriff, you do lights and radios in your vehicles, and you need high-output alternators in yours as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think we looked at, one of your vehicles was like $39,000. Did that have lights and radios and stuff on that thing? Now, I know that this has utility bed and tools and stuff, and I understand those are really important.
If you're talking about my vehicle, my three-quarter-ton Dodge?
I'm just talking about stripped-down sheriff's vehicles. Didn't we have one last year?
We, yeah, we, yes, sir, we buy, we buy, generally, it's the, I'm trying to remember what it's called. It's the heavy-duty or special-purpose vehicle that we buy, if there's not a police package...
Okay.
Available, and that has the high output, so...
Okay. All right, and that was, was it $40,000, $39,000, something like that?
I believe so. I think my three-quarter-ton Dodge that has the high output on it, because we ordered it, we picked everything that was on it, I think it was, it was definitely less than $4,000. I don't remember exactly.
Okay. Okay. I understand there's some needs that maybe aren't meant there and stuff. Like I said, if it's going to have leather seats, I'm a little no, but I appreciate all the deal, and I'm open for discussion, but I just say, man, we can do vinyl seats, and we can just, our butts considered on vinyl seats are pretty dang good.
Well, and the $65,000 is not the vehicle, the total, or the cost of the vehicle. That is just a moveover so that we have enough in that line of item.
Okay, sure. I completely understand that. You've got to put a bed on there, it's probably $5,000 or $6,000 if it's utility bed and outfitted with tools, and I understand there's some added expenses there, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay. Done with questions now.
Eric? Call for the vote?
McCutcheon?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, Cottonwood budget adjustment, Joshua Mack.
Okay, so the Cottonwood Volunteer Fire Department, they're looking at the same vehicle, so we're trying to do it as a combination deal to save some money as well. So they're needing capital budget adjustment in their light trucks of $20,000, as they already had, I believe, $45 budgeted. And then they're needing to add $40,000 to other assets as buffer room for the camper portion.
Okay, questions?
No, sir. I do.
Yes, sir.
You said they had $45,000?
Yes, sir.
And we're moving $20,000?
Yeah, they're just trying to match what Atoka's putting in there.
Well, that makes $65.
Yeah, so that way they have the money set in there. They're not planning to spend it all, they're just moving it to make sure that they don't have to come back.
Right, that's all good, so that's $65. And then you said $40,000 to make sure they had enough for the, whatever, the bed or whatever you just said.
Yeah, for the utility bed and the camper box. Yes, sir.
His was $65,000.
He already has money budgeted in his other assets.
Okay.
So they're just moving money over for other assets because that includes any trailers, campers, and they're looking at a few different projects. So the chief's just trying to move over the money to make sure he has what he may possibly need, not that he's going to expend it all.
So we're not looking at a truck here, we're looking at a truck, plus, plus, plus?
Yeah, there's other projects within it that they're trying to accomplish.
Okay. And y'all are, went in together so we could get a better deal?
Yes, sir, that's the plan, just like we discussed.
Yes, on the trucks and the beds themselves.
That's something we've been asking for, so I just want to say I appreciate y'all teaming up and trying to get us some better deals, so...
Yes, sir.
That's all I have for the moment, thanks.
Where?
Now, this is just, it's all fire excise tax, but...
Yes, sir, everything's fire excise.
Okay.
Call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Cottonwood Fire Excise Cash Balance Adjustment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Question? Okay, call for the vote?
McCutcheon?
No.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay, Otis Volunteer Fire Department, here, 4,000 gallons, thanks for that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Otis Volunteer Fire Department went to the fire board requesting an application for a 60 percent project to purchase a new tanker to replace their current one, which is a standard, so that's an issue for, it's basically an old water truck. It is coming to its life. As you can see, it's 24 years old with almost 250,000 miles on it. And in that, we're also talked to Malaga, as they're looking to replace their tanker because it's only 2,000 gallons, it's a 2004 model, and it's been having a lot of issues and been in and out of the shop. So we went and did this as a combined project again to try to cut some expense down. So your revenue sources are 60 percent fire excise money, and then you've got Otis's fire excise cash balance and Malaga Fire's excise cash balance. Can you scroll it down just a little bit? Thank you. The total price of both trucks together is the $1,020,750. And then you'll see $300,000 was going towards Otis's truck from the fire excise, and then they'll pay the remaining $210, $350, $25, and Malaga will be taking the full expense. Our original quote on... Our original quote on this truck by itself for Otis, I believe, was five hundred and twenty-five. They came down a little bit. And if we can get it approved today and then, we also save money because due to the still tariffs and all that stuff, they're saying that they're gonna have a price increase at the end of the month. So that's why it's here today to try to cut that expense. And then also by combining it as a package deal on the contract, we don't have to pay the two fees that we have to pay for HGA C, we just pay the one two-thousand-dollar fee.
They already have this in their budget?
Yes, sir. Well, it'll be a budget adjustment, they have the cash balance, it just was not budgeted for the year. So that's what we're asking is for the budget adjustment with their cash balance. Because how we were, we budgeted is basically whatever they are projecting unless they have a major project coming and if they don't, then we don't budget that money. We kinda let the cash balance sit there and that's where we come back to the commission and from y'all's direction, we have a different approach that the county manager and I have discussed for the upcoming years to make sure that things are budgeted so we don't have to consistently come back.
Questions, Steve?
No, I, I think this is a lot of the stuff we've been asking for here.
Yes, sir.
And I'd love the information, two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand miles, I can make a decision on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm looking at this and the, and the truck is twenty-four years old with two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand miles?
Yes, sir, the current one.
Been around a year or two.
Yeah. And still runs good.
That was wisely spent money.
Well-used, then.
Larry? John?
No, nope. Good information. Appreciate it. Thanks, y'all. I just wanna reiterate again, thanks for y'all starting to combine some of this stuff to try to get us better deals, I think. I've asked for that for a long time and I appreciate y'all making that effort.
And that'll be the other nice thing is they're identical trucks, so, um, one'll be up in Otis, the other one down in Malaga, they respond together so their guys can each run each other's trucks. And it takes us from six thousand gallons of water to eight thousand gallons of water, which with the oil field down there, we definitely need the water, so.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Otis Volunteer Fire Department Pierce four-thousand-gallon tanker. And do we need to include anything else on that because it's not just?
It, it doesn't even say it, Mel.
It's not, it's not on that, right?
No, it's just the two tankers for.
How does that work?
That's not on the agenda, is it?
That's fine.
Should've been a little more clear in the agenda request, but I think it's sufficient to go ahead and approve both of those at this point.
If we include them?
Because it was included in, in the description of the agenda request. The title of it, not as descriptive, but the by itself.
So the title was move sixty percent money?
Right.
Purchase two tanker trucks is what we should've had as the title.
Yeah.
So it was, I missed that.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Should I adjust the motion then?
I think you need to adjust it to what, to more, along lines of the description that's included there.
I make a motion that we approve the Otis Volunteer Fire Department Pierce, Pierce four-thousand-gallon tanker along with the Malaga Volunteer Fire Department for their replacement of their two thousand and four model tanker.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Question? Call for the vote?
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Get the Commissioners to sign this. This will support the fire boards.
The only thing I was waiting for Josh's was for you to say, but wait, there's more.
Yeah.
After, after, after you said, after you said, if we do it today, we can get the discounts, but wait, there's more, but then it didn't.
Good.
This is twenty-eight.
Okay. Request to change the date of the February fourth, twenty-twenty commission meeting to Thursday, February sixth, twenty-twenty. Alan Davis.
So because of the Bat Brigade going to Santa Fe, um, this weekend and being there Monday, Tuesday, it was suggested that, um, because of folks that were participating, that it might be appropriate to move the meeting from Tuesday to Thursday. So, uh, we included the resolution on the agenda for your consideration, whether you wanna move the, because you, you were scheduled, the regularly scheduled meeting would be next Tuesday at eight-thirty. Bat Brigade will still be in Santa Fe or on their way home, so.
That was the motion. Okay. Any questions?
Nothing.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to. Either way. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to change, uh, the February fourth, twenty-twenty commission meeting to Thursday, February sixth at eight-thirty.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Question? Call for the vote?
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
There is a resolution contained within the resolution, a consent agenda to make that change. It is actually, you just pulled it out in here? Okay. Need to approve that resolution then.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Still moved?
Yeah, there it is.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Call, call for the vote.
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda.
I have nothing.
No, sir. Nothing to pull.
I don't have anything.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the resolution agreement consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second question. No questions? Call for the vote?
McCutcheon?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Department updates.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, update for Public Works. As requested, we've had, uh, in the south for our, our concern, our road trackers, since the beginning of the year, we've, we've rolled over our trackers and, uh, we can pull those up if you want to. We've had reported nineteen concerns, we've addressed fifteen of them. And in the north, we've only had one report, uh, one concern reported and we've addressed that, uh, the same week. Our south department is working on remediating and repairing Angel Ranch Road. They're milling the edges and bringing in millings to that road. And then we also have crews out potholing on Calvany, uh, Calh- Calhody and Dark Canyon. We've also put on our schedule to address Carrasco and London Road, um, as well as we have several other projects going on, Fisherman's Lane, Twin Wells, and, uh, we're also continuing our planning for our alternate routes through McDonald, uh, to Twin Wells to Buck, to Buck Jackson and to tie those in. In the north, we're blading on CR one and CR two fifty-seven. We're blading and hauling and we're also actually patching on North Twenty-sixth as we prepare to repair that road because it's in such dire condition. The projects we're working on in Black River Village, um, we, we've had some developments on that. We've decided we're gonna go in there and realign that and, uh, saving us a significant amount of money and we're gonna bring a budget adjustment to you or a reallocation, uh, to Duarte Road on that one to go ahead and start that project as it is in, um, dire need and sees very heavy traffic. North Twenty-sixth, as we discussed with the cap project, uh, with your approval this morning of the budget adjustment, we'll proceed on that one. The plan on that one is to go in and mill the edges, remediate the edges, put a two-inch hot mix overlay on and then chip seal over the top of that to seal it in with a fog seal on top of that, which should create a pretty, uh, sturdy and structural section for that road for years ago. White City Road, we've actually had some development with DHSEM. A couple weeks ago, we had a conversation with DHSEM and FEMA where we did request White City Road be pulled out of the forty-one ninety-nine CFR forty-four and put in its own CFR to allow us to presume construction on that, to get that road to where it is passable again and where we can start using that one. Uh, we had a quick phone call with them yesterday and we're hoping to see that here in the next couple of weeks with construction resuming a week or so after that. Um, the other DHSEM projects are, um, moving forward and we're hoping to see those within the next upcoming months. The road assessment, we had a good meeting last week, they presented our data to us. We took the preliminary data to Santa Fe with us, um, we're planning on having the budget analysis and the, the prioritization of the roads here within February to be able to present to the commission and show where we're at. With that, I'll stand for questions.
Steve?
Thank you for getting to Dark Canyon, man, I've had a lot of calls.
Yes, sir.
Larry?
Don't have any.
Have we, uh, reached out to Artisia at all to let them know we're doing our part and if they're interested to do their, I mean, that would be a small section for them, but...
Um, I actually have a meeting scheduled with Artisia. I have to visit with them regarding our solid waste advisory board and get someone coming to that. And I was gonna bring this up at that point with Byron and the mayor, whoever we get a meeting set up with, so.
Anything else? Jason, I just want to tell you, I think you're doing a great job. I think that our roads and stuff, we're making progress on them, although slow, but they were such in dire need to begin with. That's all we can hope for is to make a slow, steady, uh, progress on these roads and I think that, that you're doing that and I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner, if I may, I got one. Because I did, and Stephen was there, I, I did a, we had a meeting the other day in Artisia and I just wanted to compliment you because one of your, your associates was in there, uh, and he spoke, stood, he, I, you know, I called him up to say, hey, they're doing a great job and he wanted to take the mic and talk and, and he, which I thought was fantastic, but he really applauded your leadership and, uh, the leadership of the department. So I think it shows, uh, from top down, everybody's got the one mission, one mind and I, I think that's a, a show of leadership, so I, I just wanna...
We've given the, essentially the power back to our, our operators to go out and do their jobs and do what they know how and that's what we hire them for. We have some of the best operators in the, in the state and we send them out to do a job and they've been performing very well, so we're very proud of them.
It shows, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other department updates?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to present this award. I know a lot of you couldn't make it, but Eddie County was given the most improved audit award for fiscal year eighteen.
Right.
President Mark Cage was there, so he was able to take a picture with us. But I just wanted to let all the elected officials and departments know thank you very much because I know it's a burden of all the rules and regulations we put upon you guys, um, so thank you because this is all for you guys as well too. And I know Lori left, but special thanks to Lori and the Treasurers because they're an integral part of the audit as well, so just wanted to say thank you.
I'm not a department, but I can give a report if I'm allowed. Thank you to everybody that came to the, uh, New Mexico County's Legislative Conference and, uh, supported New Mexico Counties. And, uh, it was, it was a really, really, um, I thought, a, a, a very effective and very productive conference. And I, I appreciate all of you coming and supporting me at my, uh, presidential reception. That, that was for, for you folks, though. I mean, really, that was, that was for Eddie County. That's why, that's why I, I ran for president, well, originally vice president, was to push Eddie County forward. And I'm gonna continue to do that throughout this. Our next thing is gonna be, our next big deal is going to be, um, Las Cruces, we're in Doniana County, we're gonna have our, uh, annual conference. So I think that's gonna be a really good time. Hopefully the sheriff there doesn't come and arrest me. She doesn't like me much. But, uh, anyway, it, it was, it was a really good deal. I had the, the, and I, I will, I, I had the pleasure of introducing our governor at, at our general sessions as well as, uh, Representative, uh, Zochiel Torres Small. Our politics may not jibe with each other, but, um, I do respect their positions and, uh, Torres Small is actually, is a very, very, very nice lady. It's, it's hard to dislike her, it really is. You have to try. But we got a lot done and we, we have a lot to go still. We've got, this is a very, very fast legislative session and obviously we're gonna have a lot of hot button issues. They're, they've started today as a matter of fact. So, uh, we, we've got that going on. One thing I, and, and I'll just, I'll shift gears from that real quickly. Well, no, I'll stick with that for just a second and tell you that I did fail in one aspect and that was poor Jerry Fanning lost his jacket and I was unable to locate it. So someone took his jacket. They thought it was his, theirs, I guess, and, uh, left one.
They did.
Oh, uh, never mind, I was successful, I did it. That was all me. Good. I'm glad to hear that because that...
Oh.
They found one that was exactly like it but was not his. Somebody's new, a new, a new Jerry jacket.
Well, that was exactly what happened in DC with, uh, NACO, uh, someone, the same exact thing happened to someone. So anyway, that's beside the point. Moving on, uh, I, I would really like for y'all to consider, uh, when we start talking about, uh, surplus, um, we really do need to consider the Pecus Valley Drug Task Force, their, their building, their facility. That, that place is a dump. It, it, it's a disaster, there's mold in there, we've been trying to do stuff to mitigate it for years and we've never, ever been able to get a hold of it. It, it would be, I think, a desirable property for us to, to sell and do something better for them. And you and I have talked...
Located on?
They're right behind BES.
They are wood, street rent.
Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Yeah.
Center.
And it's no secret, everybody knows where they are. I mean, it, the, the, the bad guys watch them come and go. So, um, it, it doesn't matter that we talk about it here, but I, I really wish that, that while we have some money, that we consider doing something with that. It's, it's, it's definitely a necessity. And we, uh, come next week, we will have goose eggs, uh, on, uh, our vacancies at the Eddie County Sheriff's Office. We'll have more deputies employed at Eddie County Sheriff's Office than at any time in history. We have one that's out on FMLA and one that is on long-term military leave. However, we, and we, we're really excited about that. We've got a couple that'll be going to the academy, um, so of course they're not that useful right now, but we're, we're making the best of it. We're putting them in court security and stuff like that to where they can actually work on their own. We don't put them on the street until they're certified. But we're gonna, we're looking at always, we're looking at maximizing our efficiency, reorganization. I'll be coming back before you with probably a, a couple of reclassifications maybe to more effectively utilize our personnel. We believe in good, strong management and leadership and supervision because that keeps us from having the mistakes that Cass has to come and help us with. So I'll be bringing some more ideas to you. I have some ideas also about, that I've been discussing with our county manager, about ideas to help retention and keep those goose eggs that we have for vacancies and keep our folks here and keep them happy. So I really do appreciate all the support from the county, everybody, you know, that we have at the sheriff's office. And it just, we are, we are a premier law enforcement agency, and we continue, and we plan to stay that way. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Questions?
I think if the only thing we lost in Santa Fe was Jerry's jacket, we're coming out.
We haven't lost, we're not done losing yet, I don't think, but...
Nobody got locked up. Sheriff hugged the governor twice.
I did. I did. I even, she made me promise to give her a black cowboy hat, too, so I guess I'm going to, I'm on the hook for that.
Larry?
I don't worry. No.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other department updates?
The courthouse chairman, Commissioners?
The courthouse. Just a quick update. Fire Services is getting their roof coating, as Roberta explained a little earlier. They started on the scooper, or scuppers in the metalwork, which will allow overflow situations when they get their two inches an hour to get that water off of the building before it gets inside the building. I'm currently waiting for some proposals. We did have some mold in that building that we do need to mitigate. We'll get the proposals, and I will need to request some additional funding here in the next month or two to get all that stuff nailed down. That's unfortunate, but it was a result of years and years of water getting into that building. So in addition to that, I would encourage each of you to come visit me in my office after this meeting. I have a trophy to show you from our Eddie County courthouse.
I'm not coming.
It's been sanitized, I assure you. But it is something that each of you really needs to see. I could take a picture, I could try to describe it, but none of that would do justice. It's a piece of cast iron pipe that we found inside a wall that had approximately a six-foot split in it that was causing a very, not good situation for the staff in that building, so to speak. Karen is in the audience back there, she can attest. That's our Eddie County, or not Eddie County, that's the district court clerk for the courts over there, but it was her staff that was primarily affected by all of this. They had a lot of lost time. Some of her staff was having to leave, they were getting sick, and then things due to these fumes. So something I need to show you, something that needs to be on our radar going forward. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
So that's, that's, that's the condition of the facility and its likelihood of reoccurrences?
Well, you know, I could estimate anywhere between 100 to 250 linear feet of very similar pipe running through that building, just within the walls. That would not be, or count any linear feet that's below the slab, which is really difficult and hard, should we have to explore replacing sewer line under that building. It just starts becoming real unfeasible to do so. I know the building's telling us some things right now, where we have some sewer backups from time to time. There's no rhyme or reason why it happens. We're trying to draw correlations to court activities, or certain visitors, or stuff like that. We just can't find any. Sometimes it makes a mess, sometimes it doesn't, but the sewer smell inside the building was definitely, you know, I can't really say it's a lack of maintenance, but we threw a lot of resources at it. There were some maintenance items that we did, the easy, easy first, you know, work our way up progression until we get at least their most invasive, where we moved a cabinet off of a wall about the size of that picture thing there, and had to cut into that wall, you know, quite a bit to get all this stuff out. So we got to do that 10 times a year. That'd be pretty rough. Is it possible? Yes. Probable? Maybe, maybe not. I can't speak to that. This is one of the first ones I've seen like this in my career as a facility guy.
Is there any way to take an auger and auger some of that out and replace it as you auger it out?
There's different methods for sewer, you know, line under the slab, so to...
Right.
There's methods where they go in and actually kind of pressurize the system and blow a PVC product out the other end, and, you know, kind of recoat that. Because what happens is, you think, oh, something's blocked up in the sewer line, and it's corroding from the bottom. Well, that's not where it's getting corroded at. It's corroding in the top. Makes the cracks in the top and the splits in the top, and that's just due to, you know, sewer gases and other chemicals that are used in times, you know, where maintenance, instead of running a snake down the drain, they actually pour some kind of chemical drain cleaner in there, thinking they're doing a good job. Oh, yeah, that works. It's the worst thing anybody can do. In a house, a business, anything, is pour a chemical drain cleaner in the drain. And I believe, you know, years and years of this happening is probably what led to this instance. We found another issue in another, in a smaller area, the building affecting less people. We were able to fix that with wax rings underneath the toilet. Just simple things, but, I mean, those wax rings were completely eroded. Probably should just be on a five- or 10-year schedule and be done with it, or wait till one starts stinking, and then go through the whole area and get them all. But we tried those things first. That did not work with this piece of pipe, so...
I just...
We did everything short of a smoke test in the building, and I'm planning on our Monday holiday in February, I'd need to double-check with the courts if they have that day offered up, but if they do have it off, we're going to do a smoke test in there and try to identify any other issues we might have in a wall with the building that's unoccupied at the time.
I know on sewer lines, there's ways to replace that without having to dig them up.
Right. Well, so may I, can I expand on that first, before your question?
I need some time to answer this.
We have a similar situation at the detention center as well. You know, when I was, when we were building schools, for example, one of the first change orders we would look for at the beginning of a project, we want all that cast iron out of the project before we even get started. Change in order, change order in PVC usually resulted in a huge cost savings. PVC is cheaper, easier to work with, gets installed faster. That didn't happen on our buildings. One of the things I suspect is, we're only talking about a six-inch sewer. When we load that building up with 300 and 400 occupants, I believe that happens at least once or twice a month, probably a lot more. You know, that's a lot of usage. Maybe they could have foresaw that happening back in 2000 when they did the last remodel, but continually over time, I believe that building's just been used to about its max capacity. Similar with the detention center. I believe those, those dimensions of those sewer lines that are underneath the slabs are undersized, in my opinion. I believe they should be eight, probably eight, eight-inch, maybe even 10, depending, just so when we have these problems, they can install more and more cleanouts and get more effective with getting this stuff out before it turns into problems inside the building. Sorry I didn't ask, but I needed to get that out. I believe we have undersized lines. In my opinion, I'd like to see them a lot bigger.
If you had a, I know you have work order records and everything, if you have those, could we deduce what percentage of your time is spent at the courthouse and at the detention?
Yes, we can. So we've been working real hard on that. First couple of years, we have the work order system. We were, you know, our data was inconsistent about the work orders coming back, especially the time from staff. However, the previous two years, we've been really, really good with getting that data entered. We don't complete a work order until that time is actually entered. And so, yeah, we can pull that information out, trying to get receipts, and all that stuff gets captured in there as well. Because even when we hire a vendor, there's still Eddie County resources that's holding their, you know, not holding their hand, but making sure they have access to the building, making sure they know where to look, where they can go in a company, even though they might not be physically doing the work. So we do have that type of information, yes, sir.
I'm not saying we need to do anything tomorrow, but I think we need some data moving forward and planning forward. So if we could see something, and basically, just, I would like to see it just broken down to what percentage of your budget, whether it's contractor or your own assets. You know, I don't know what your budget is, I can't remember...
It's pretty loud.
$15 million.
About $2 million, something like that.
No, no. 15.
15, 15 million, something like that.
Not even close.
Thanks, Al. Appreciate it. So whatever it is, if we say, hey, we're spending 68% of our time at the courthouse or whatever, anyways, just, just in going...
We're working on it. We'll have a...
Larry? I don't have anything? Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
Any other department heads? Moving on, travel request agenda, consent agenda. Any questions? Steve?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Larry?
No.
John?
No, sir.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve travel request consent agenda as presented.
Second? I have a motion and a second question. No question. Call for the vote.
Cetson?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved. Emergency business. Any emergency business? No emergency business. Moving on. Legislative update.
Chairman, morning Commissioners. Yes, we are into the 2020 legislative session full bore. Had an interesting week up there last week. Just to kind of bring you up to speed as of this morning, there were 260 House bills that have been submitted, 182 Senate bills, for a total of 442 bills. We've had 62 memorials, joint memorials, and joint resolutions for a total of 504 pieces of legislation. And unfortunately, they have another week. So, so by the 5th, who knows how many we're going to have. Couple of things of interest to us, which has been, especially the lodgers tax has been 117. It has been referred to committee and is scheduled for Thursday in the local government's land grants cultural affairs. So there's several of us that are going up. I'll be leaving this afternoon to try to help garner support for that bill tomorrow from the members of the committee. It'll also be heard first thing on Thursday morning. So that bill right now looks pretty favorable. We got some really good feedback from several people, from several groups that stand in support. Of course, we've seen resolutions that have also been put out for this particular piece of legislation. So I feel pretty confident about it getting through the first committee. I think it'll be, I think it'll be gotten through there pretty quickly. That's my hope. One of the things, one of the other pieces of legislation that we have a special interest in is House Bill 104. That's the county tax road credit. It has been scheduled to the House Transportation Public Works Capital Improvements Committee. It's been referred to that, I should say, but it has not been scheduled as to date. There has been some questions about that bill in talking with several folks about it. Some of the oil and gas folks would like to see a couple of small changes with it. Representative Brown is having conversations on that. She and I are talking practically two or three times a day about this bill. One of the things that was of concern was, of course, the connotation and description of it being a tax credit. The speaker, when he was here, expressed concern about that. Tax credits are viewed a little different at the legislative level, and some, some of our legislators do not like them. So right now, what we're doing, Representative Brown, as of this morning, is considering submitting another bill, which would be a dual bill to this bill, and instead of calling it a tax credit, it will probably be called a tax exemption or deduction. So those bills will be joint-run together. She's in the process of getting the fiscal impact report back on that bill, thinking that that will help us garner some support once, once we kind of get that thing scheduled. So as I'm up there in the next few days, we'll be having a lot of conversations about that. Another bill that's of great interest in, is House Bill 160. That's the cannabis bill. I want to just give very high compliments to the sheriff and his capacity with New Mexico Counties and the presentation panel that they put together last week that we were fortunate to be able to listen to. I thought it brought to light many things that personally I was not aware of. But I think one of the things, we heard officials from the state of Washington, we also heard officials from the state of Colorado, who have actually enacted recreational marijuana. Both of those states agreed that they got their cart way ahead of the horse, and that this is a highly regulated industry, and there are a lot of things that we would see come back to the local level if this type of legislation, the way it's written right now, is enacted, that would put a great burden on our communities and a great burden on our counties. So hopefully, we have heard behind the scenes, good, what I would call, good input, saying that they feel that the legislation probably doesn't have a lot of chance the way it stands. I hope they're right. We will continue to collect information on that and stand in opposition to that legislation for the reasons that I just brought forward to you. Have any questions, let us know. One of the other bills, the Senate Bill Red, Senate Bill 5, which is a red flag bill, which I think is being heard tomorrow.
It's here today. It's here today. And the cannabis bill.
And the cannabis bill, both. So, and the sheriff might want to speak more to that, but the red flag bill, we also know is, would be very burdensome on our county, and we stand in opposition. Sheriff, come on over.
I'll take the opportunity to do that.
I would love for you to do that.
And I, I think it's germane for us to, and germane being a really good term right now, considering we're in the short legislative session, but I think it's germane for us to talk about that here, because y'all voted as a commission to, for Eddie County to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county. And again, a lot of talk has been made about that being symbolic, and it is symbolic. And it's not legally binding. Well, that's fine. The problem we have right now, though, is there is no input being paid attention to in our legislature by the highest-ranking law enforcement officials in the state, which are the sheriffs. We have three sheriffs, three out of 33, that are not opposed to this. One is obviously loves it. One is kind of neutral, and the other one just is not even involved as a sheriff. In Los Alamos County, that sheriff has decided paperwork only. That's all I do is serve papers. And that's fine. That's his prerogative. The rest of us are vehemently opposed to this bill. It violates a number of, a number of civil rights, God-given, constitutionally-recognized rights. We are not, and we've been characterized as, as gun aficionados who just, that's all we want. We want everybody to have their guns, and we're, and we, there's claims that we're just one-trick ponies, that's all we care about. It isn't. But it is crucial to understand that we are for public safety. We are for protecting people. We, I've taken guns away from people several times, violent people, people in mental crisis. We have a way to do that. And it's protected, and the individual is protected. We take the guns away from folks, where, what do we do? We take, by, with this red flag law, if they were to pass it, we go and we take them away, not to mention the due process is being ignored, because you don't have a chance to, you don't even know what's going on. You don't even have a clue that it's going on. It's going on behind your back, in, behind closed doors, someone is accusing you, and a judge is deciding without your input, without you being able to say, hey, no, I didn't do that. I mean, we all know that's happened before. We'll just leave that alone. Now I'm going to go and I'm going to take your guns away from you, supposedly, that's what they say. I'm going to come and take your guns away from you. How do we know what guns you have, first off, and what ammunition you have? Well, it says that the court can issue a search warrant. And Cass can back me up on this. There has to be an affiant, someone to swear, these are the facts, to a judge, who is a trier of facts, who says, okay, y'all sign off on that warrant. The judge doesn't, the judge doesn't get to do that, and they don't want to do that. So this is what this bill is saying, the court will issue this warrant. Warrants also, or search warrants are very, very constitutionally-regulated specificity. We, when we apply for a search warrant, we have to tell you exactly what we are looking for. A Ruger 9-millimeter revolver is at John Henry's house, and that's what we're going to go look for. We're talking about looking for ammunition, bullets. A bullet can be that big. A bullet can be hidden anywhere. We can take, this search warrant, we'd be able to go and take off plates, electrical plates, to look behind them. So the ACLU is even against these red flag laws. That's crazy, when ACLU and sheriffs are together. But the ACLU is even against this, because what's going to happen if we decide we're going to serve these search warrants? We're going to see everything in your house. We have carte blanche to look everywhere in your house. And anything that we find, well, there you go. So if you have pictures of your husband, or your wife, or your significant other, you're not, those are, that are private pictures, or, and I'm using that as an example, letters, anything, we are privy to them now, and we can look at them. Think about all that. So this is what we're trying to push forward. It's a problem, that, not we, as a state, that's what they're doing. They're not listening to our input. Additionally, once we go in and do this, and if, and if we find things, if we find the guns, we take them away. And so we find all of them. Great, wonderful. Now you're safe, right? Because none of us like our guns, that, that own them, we, we, they're just things. So you can go take them away from you, I'm not gonna get pissed off about it. So now I leave somebody who's already in mental crisis, now they're really furious because we just took away something that means a whole lot to them. And we're gonna leave them in that environment. What have we just done for a victim? We've just left that victim even more vulnerable because now, now this person is even, even more furious. And they're still in mental crisis, and we've done nothing to help them mentally. We've done nothing to help them emotionally. So, I'm gonna get off my soapbox here. I just want to make sure that everybody is educated, because a lot of people have different views on the red flag. They think that we're, the sheriffs are just lawless, and, and we're just, nah, we're not gonna do that. No, that's not what we're saying. We're saying, this is flawed, there's a problem here. We need to look at all aspects of this. If you look at these mass shootings, there's none of these mass shootings that could have been avoided by a red flag law. None of them. The one, the one that they keep touting in El Paso, they had intel on this. Law enforcement failed in many aspects in some of these, these shootings because we had information, and I say we, as law enforcement, we had information, we didn't act upon it. That doesn't mean we need a law saying that we're gonna go do another act and violate more, and violate civil rights. So I just hope that everybody keeps that in mind as this moves forward. And we're not sure, we're, we're not sure how it's gonna go. We're hearing it'll never make it out of the Senate. We're hearing it's gonna make it. We're hearing it's not gonna make it out of the Senate this year, but they're gonna do it next year. So we just need to keep an eye on it, and that, that's, I, I'm here to educate, I'm here to, to, well, that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to educate on, on, on all this because so many people have a lot of misinformation, and it gets very emotional. And I try to keep the emotion out of it, I try to keep it very fact-based. So that's where I am, and I, I took up a lot of your time, so.
You're fine. I appreciate that. Thank you, Sheriff. One of the things along with Sheriff's here, I would just like to pass along, I had the, the honor of sitting in on the New Mexico counties lobbyist meeting last Friday morning, a very interesting meeting. One of the things that I do want to bring out is that there were a lot of things, a lot of praises that were given for our sheriff and his leadership of that committee, and I felt very proud to be at the table with him on those things. The, along the other lines, too, the same lines, a lot of counties, a lot of counties in that room had great things to say about Eddie County, their appreciation of the money that we're sending to them, of course, and very supportive of us, of our ideas, of the things that we're trying to back, such as a lodger's tax. Just great things said about Eddie County. One of the things that I, I will bring forward is that I had a little problem with, was San Miguel County saying how much they appreciated our money, when in fact, San Miguel, L County is one of the counties that have enacted a ban against fracking. So I didn't think it was very appropriate for me to say what I was feeling at my first meeting, but I am saving it possibly for later, because I really have a little bit of heartburn about someone that doesn't want it in their backyard, but they really like our money. But anyway, I just, just want to pass along. Any questions? I stand for questions about the legislature.
Steve.
I have none, sir. Pardon. I don't have anything.
Thank you.
You may. Thank you.
One more comment on legislative issues, and this is for our audience, especially because there's a lot of para members here that contribute to para. There is a bill, and I don't know that, I don't know the number, but there, it's, it's a para reform bill. It's a problem. It's a big problem. It's being pushed by the Albuquerque Police Department Union. They, and, and the Albuquerque Police Department Union does not represent the rest of the law enforcement officers in the state. New Mexico counties opposes, that's one of our, our, our policy statements, is we oppose any increases of para contributions by the counties. We oppose it. And I would go on to say that I oppose it for employees as well. We don't need to pay more into para. We have some issues, some very specific issues in para that need to be addressed. We do have some shortcomings. One of them is, are, some of them are state issues. The state needs to fix it, not on the backs of the counties. That's a big problem. We've got some issues in municipal fire, which is county, I mean, they call it municipal, but it applies to county, and we have a, a small shortcoming in municipal police, which is law enforcement. Those can be fixed fairly easily. The firing can be fixed with probably just an infusion from this wonderful surplus that we have. We can fix it that way without overburdening employers and employees. That's our problem, or with retirees like myself and Commissioner Wood. We, 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 we don't need to pay, we don't need to lose our colas, which I'm not even getting yet, I won't, until, because I have to wait seven years for it. I know that you get it, right, Commissioner? And, and that's important to you. We need to be careful about this. Colas are a problem. We're looking at, one of the good parts about this bill is they're looking at a market-based cola, where if it's a good market, you get a good cola. If it's not, if the market's low, you get a lower cola. That makes sense. That, that's common, that, that, that's how it works across the nation. But increasing, y'all need to keep, keep, keep this in mind, and you need to talk to your legislators about it, and you need to give them your input, because it's, it's crucial. We don't need to pay more into it. We pay a lot in it as it is. Fortunately, this county picks up a large part of it for the employees. That's great. I got sons at the city that pay in over twenty percent into para, at the city police department. They can't afford to pay more into it. It's gonna be taking money out of my grandchildren's mouth, or food out of my grandchildren's mouths. I don't like that. So just my two cents.
Yep. Thank you.
Legislators and elected officials. Okay. County manager.
Couple of things echo comments about the, the NMC session last week in Santa Fe. Having all the commissioners in Santa Fe at the same time was, really sent a message. I think Eddie County was well-represented, and we, we made a, a lot of good headway with our legislators while we were there. I had the opportunity, thanks to Mr. Tabor, to meet with the governor. She spent thirty minutes with us. We were able to share our message, talk about what's going on in Eddie County, and talk about the needs in, in closing the gap that's occurring because of the impact of the increase in, in population and activity in the county. She, she said she understood. We told her we were working at innovative ways to try and accomplish that and close that gap, but we needed a little bit of help to make it happen. Once we got it closed, we felt like we could sustain that with, with the resources we had. So that was, that was a positive discussion. We also had the opportunity through, through efforts by Mr. Hooper to meet with New Mexico Transportation Secretary Sandoval, and we had an outstanding meeting there to help build some partnerships in, with the state, local government, being county government, and industry, to help on getting some of the roads that Jason has identified as relief routes when two-eight-five construction starts. So the state has said they will, they will match monies with us, which was a huge, huge windfall, in my opinion, their willingness to do that. Our objective is then to help get industry to, to help with that partnering. And we told them we could get it done, so we'll, we'll put that together. I think that would be, and I responded, or I sent the governor an email through the, I don't have, I went through the website and through the screening, but, so that, that would be a great example, a poster example, of what can be done when we all work together. Sheriff Cage talked about at the NMC legislative breakfast on Thursday morning about crowding the aisle, forgetting about partisan and getting in the middle, and he, he challenged the governor to crowd the aisle with him, and that's when the hat deal kind of took place. But it's important, when we work together, we can do a lot of things, and we've, we've seen examples of that, you know, fire services and facilities. When we work together, we can get a lot of stuff done, so we'll, we'll continue to work on that. Part of the, part of that effort in messaging and advocacy, last, last, as we ended last meeting, there was some comment about, well, y'all know A-Ten, get A-Tenda. So Mr. Hooper, you know, I don't know if you can see it in the audience, but I'll pass it around to commissioners. Here is A-Ten's version, y'all may know him as, as a local artist, but there's the Eddie County horse, bedraggled as it is, hauling this big old wagon load of money up to Santa Fe, right? And so I think it was Mr. McCutcheon coined the phrase, feed the horse, right? I was, I was a little concerned initially about all that money falling out the back, but that's about the eyedropper's worth that, that we get back that comes out the front end of that. So I'll, I'll, I'll pass those around, and we'll work on getting that message, you know, used in different places and different things, but people, people do, are beginning to understand, and I think the effort of advocacy in sharing that message about what's happening here, what we're trying to accomplish, we absolutely like the opportunity. We just need a little help close the gap to provide the public safety, the infrastructure, and resources that citizens in the county expect, and we're, we're trying to work to those ends. So thank you all for, for being there, for being visible. The governor made the comment, she would like to see the commissioners come back towards the end of the session, and, and so if we can set up a meeting with her and hear our priorities, hear our needs, and have the commissioners give her that message, she's, she's willing to sit and listen, so we'll, we'll see if we can maybe work to that end as well. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. County commissioners.
Steve.
I'd just like to thank everybody that went to the legislative session, you know, from Jerry to Wes, Al, everybody putting everything together. All the commissioners were there, really got a lot of good, good comments. Felt like we had a few more friends in Santa Fe when we left than when we got there, so I felt like it was a good deal. Wes did a great job setting that, that meeting up with Secretary Sandoval. I just thought that was a, that was a huge deal, that was a good cherry on top of the ice cream there, so it was, it was really good. Looking forward to the, looking forward here to the thirty-day battle, and we've got, we've got Sheriff up there. Having our, representing us at New Mexico counties and then keeping track of all the damaging legislation, and Jerry as well. Up there, he's got a lot of contacts and opening some doors that are, that are gonna be very necessary to be open. So I don't like feeling like we're on the, like we're on the defense here, I feel like we're a little more proactive, and with two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand in our lodger's tax fund, I'll make quite a few hats with Eddie the Horse on them, I guess. So T-shirts, things like that. We talked about, you know, if we had him on some, some good T-shirts, that would be good. Commissioner Henry brought that up, and had good T-shirts, or good, good type shirts that people would wear. We can make Eddie the Horse famous, maybe, not as famous as Smokey the Bear, but a pretty close counterpart, hopefully, so. That's what we're doing, and see if we can, you know, we do, we do have quite a bit of money, and we went through our, the budget versus actual, and, and all those things, and the revenue that Eddie County has seen. The reality is our expenses are far greater even than this, than this wonderful revenue that we have, and we've got to keep the battle with Santa Fe to see, to make sure that they don't forget about us and that they are sending the money back, because the entire state is outcoining the frame, is outcoining the phrases, is, is, it's their boon for sure, our boon is their boon. And so we do have to just keep our fight up there with Santa Fe, be a little bit of a squeaky wheel, so that they don't forget, so they don't forget where it's all coming from, because at the end of the day, if we don't feed the horse, then we don't have a horse. So that's our, I think that's our commitment as, as county commissioners and as, and as, and as county leadership. So I'd like to thank everybody for that, for that effort. We even got a lot of good traction with Eddie County. We've got this report that was presented to us a couple of meetings ago. The astounding number in there is that thirty-four percent of the revenue of the state land office comes from, comes from Eddie County. So that's essentially thirty-four percent, because the state land office revenues go straight to schools. So when we think about that, one county's putting about three and a half kids through school in the, in the whole state, so it's, it's a huge number. Lee County got on the bandwagon there, and they said, where'd you get that report? How could we do that? Wes put the whole thing together. We've been talking with some of the people over at Lee County. We've got to have a concerted joint effort, you know, just as, just as Mr. County Manager was saying, that if we're together, we get a lot done. So we're trying to bridge the, bridge the gaps and, and extend the olive branches and see what we can get done politically, and to make sure that, that we can survive, we can survive as a county, because like I said, great, great revenues, and I'm not downplaying that at all, but just as the, as the money's blown out of the back of the wagon, we're getting a little money out of the back of the wagon, but Santa Fe's taken a, a whole bunch, and we've got a tremendous burden to carry here. So thank you for everybody's efforts. It's a good, good week, and I will go back to the, to the session and see what we can get done, so.
Larry. I want to congratulate Roberta, and I, you know, like she said, it's all the departments coming and working together and keeping tabs on their books, but it's, you know, that's a, that's a tribute to the employees of Eddie County, how you manage business, and then Roberta can accept the award at, at the conference for that accomplishment. Also, you know, what the sheriff mentioned about, about the PERA, that's something you need to keep an eye on. If you're looking at retiring in the next few years, I retired in two thousand and five, and it was written in the law that we get a three percent cola every year. That lasted about three years. Then we totally lost it. But for several years with no cola, this year, I got a whopping one percent increase in, in my retirement. That nowhere makes up for the increase in taxes, and, and my health insurance is probably gonna almost double since then, so I don't really get enough to cover health insurance. But, you know, I'm still blessed. I'm somewhere where I didn't think I'd ever be. But anyway, the, the PERA is something you really need to keep an eye on, because these guys do some milky business up there that, it's, it's unbelievable to read some of those, those articles they put out. You'd think that's going broke, but, you know, if they invest their money well, we had one governor that took the money away and, and did bad investments on it. That's the reason it's in the shape it is, but the state's not willing to put that money back. So anyway, that's something we need to keep an eye on.
Okay. John.
I've got a couple of things I'll go through real quick. I did, Commissioner McCutcheon was there as well. We went to the state of the state again. I always enjoy going to the state of the state, mainly because then you can kind of see what, what the governor really is gonna jump on through the session. We kind of already know, but if it's in the state of the state. And, and what I heard is, is a commercial. I heard free, 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 free. And I don't remember what that commercial is. It's an insurance commercial, right? Y'all remember that commercial where they come on and say, free, 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 free? Everything's free. TurboTax. The one thing I didn't hear is, the whole reason that they can put in all these free things is because of the oil and gas industry. Not one time did the governor thank oil and gas. She mentioned all the jobs that were created in the state of New Mexico, created by oil and gas. All the, all the surplus created in New Mexico, created by oil and gas. She neglected to mention the biggest industry that contributes to the state, and I was very disappointed. You know, they might not like oil and gas, they might not like what we produce. She's gonna like it when she buys her new fancy airplane, because something's gonna have to go in the airplane to make it fly. And that airplane's gonna be bought because of oil and gas. So, you know, I was very disappointed in not, not hearing any recognition to the one industry that makes everything else possible in this state. Speaking of oil and gas, I'm gonna go to this, that tax credit. I know Santa Fe gets real leery about tax credits. Unless it's shooting movies, then they're more than happy to give huge tax credits. So maybe we need to make a movie while we're fixing the roads, and then there'll be a tax credit. I'm not sure how that would work, but that might be an idea for Catherine Brown, because they're more than happy to give our money away when it involves a movie. They have no interest in giving it away when it's public safety to go to our roads. So that's a little disingenuous that they all should really think about as they're going through that. If I sound aggressive, I'm sorry, but they're very frustrating up there in their thought process. Couple of things, I know y'all have mentioned it, but the counties' recognitions, other counties are starting to recognize what Eddie County and Lee County contributes, and without us, where. And without us, what kind of spot they would be in. There's a lot of counties that have nothing. And without our oil and gas monies, their schools and everything else would suffer. The thing we haven't really mentioned today, and I thought I'd mention it, the minimum wage increase again. Some of the things that really concern me, as you just said, you've got a 1% increase. You're going to have all these other increases as well, your health insurance and everything else. One of the biggest concerns that I think no one's talking about in this minimum wage increase are senior citizens that have retired, are on a fixed income. And now that minimum wage is going to go up, but there's going to be nothing to help them. Minimum wage is going to go up? That's great. I'm going to pay my folks more. And then my barbecue sandwich is going to be twice as much. Well, those that are on a fixed income aren't going to be able to afford that at some point. They're not keeping this in balance. Plus, I think it's really disingenuous when you have really great employees. Nobody in Eddie County's paying minimum wage. If you are, you probably don't have employees because it's, why would you? If you can go work, I think all subs is higher than 16 bucks, I saw the other day. So, you know, no one's paying minimum wage. But as we're pushing this up, at some point, a business, small business, isn't going to continue. You know, our great employees that are making 16, $18 now are going to become awash because we can't keep that balance. Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? As these, and I'll be very honest, there's a lot of folks out there that don't deserve a raise. You know, they do the bare minimum, they show up and they do what they have to and they go home. The folks that are doing a great job are making more than minimum wage at the moment. So I don't want to see that wash and hurt folks that are doing a good job and working really hard so that these other folks can get something because, just because. So the minimum wage is a big deal in my opinion. I think we need to pay attention to it. I think it hurts a lot more people than we take into account. Again, it sounds really fun when you're up there, let's increase minimum wage and everyone gets excited. But there's some negative effects, I think, no one thinks about. So I'm anxious to see, I know like y'all said, red flag comes on today. Last year, I was really disappointed to see how uninterested legislatures were in any of our opinions. I'm curious to see what it looks like this year. You know, the way I see it up there, and I'll, whatever, I'll just say it. Like me, don't like me. What I've seen from the Democratic Party lately is you're guilty until proven innocent. I've seen that from the federal level down. This is something that's wrong with you, now prove otherwise. I see that in the red flag law. I've seen it on a number of other cases. And I think that's what we're seeing here. You're guilty, now prove to me you're innocent. And that's not the way our justice system works. There's a number of things that I think affect that, not just the red flag bill. And I don't like it. The cannabis bill, y'all already mentioned it, how unprepared the state is. I saw, I think we'll fall into what Washington State probably is now. Where the state, we see it with oil and gas, with Eddie the Horse is what our new name is for. All the money from oil and gas goes to Santa Fe and they just give a little bit back. For those that think the counties and cities are going to make all this money off of marijuana, that is incorrect. If you read the bill, a very small portion comes back for the county. And the counties then are on, yeah, 4%. And then the counties are on the hook for, if Sheriff Cage pulls someone over and they think they are impaired with marijuana, that's going to fall on us, I think. The state is going to get overrun just like Washington has. It will cost the counties and cities money by passing this bill. And they can tout how much money it's going to make for the state. I don't see it. And if you look at some of these other states that have done it, yeah, there's pennies if even that. And it's going to do way more harm than help the citizens of Eddie County especially. I've had a number of constituents come out really upset about the marijuana bill and want us to fight every way we can. I'm sure there are people out there for it. And more power to you. I say let's have a discussion about it and we can come, I've had a lot of discussions with folks for it actually. And at the end, we've come to an agreement that you have good points, I have good points. And that's the way we properly govern ourselves and not just it's our way or the highway type of deal. There's a number of resolutions and I guess I need clarification because I know that we have talked about rescinding the marijuana resolution that we passed last year. I don't know if we need to bring all these back for new votes. But I know last year we passed the, that we didn't want marijuana resolution. I'm not sure if the city has passed it or not. I know the legislatures have asked for it, so I guess this would be a cast question later. But then there's some other resolutions coming up. I know there's been quite a few citizens concerned and we've received that voter resolution. I know that maybe legally, there might not be a ton of stuff we can do. Okay, well, we'll do it afterwards, but I know that has come up a number of times. I know there's just like the sanctuary, I'm not sure where we can go with that. But there's been a lot of concern with that. So I'm not sure if we need to redo the marijuana, look at this voter registration as well as do some kind of gun resolution. I know we're sanctuary county, but I don't know if we need to send another resolution against this current bill or not. So those are things I just need clarification on later to make sure that we are doing what our constituents have asked us to do. I got a lot more, but that's plenty for now. Thanks.
Thank you, John. I think that, I want to thank each and every one of the commissioners from Eddie County because we went as a group. I think that we were seen up there and I think that people, that impressed people that we were up there as a group. And I think that the citizens of Eddie County has a right to expect that of ever elected official, whether they're mayor or city councilor or county commissioner. So I just want to thank our group for being there and being as invested in what happens in Eddie County as we were. So thank you a lot. One of the things that I did learn when I was up there and I thought was very important. $714 million went to roads in the state of New Mexico last year. $346 million in tax credits and incentives went to the movie industry. So about half as much went to the movie industry as we spent on roads. And I don't know about you guys, but I really don't care if we produce a movie in New Mexico or not. But I do care about the roads in Eddie County and surrounding areas because my family and friends drive on those every day. So I just kind of think that it's ridiculous that we're spending that much money on the industry when we have such a need for the roads in our state. So that is one thing. $6.4 billion from 2012 to 2018, Eddie County sent from the oil and gas industry. That doesn't count the monies that we sent to Santa Fe for the potash industry or the nuclear industry or the agriculture industry or any other industry. $6.4 billion over six years. And I just wish that we would have got a larger portion of that back. That doesn't even count the monies coming from Lee County and stuff. That's just Eddie County, $6.4 billion that we sent from the oil and gas industry. Pretty damn impressive. So I thought that was pretty good. And I'm ready, you'll set something up for us county commissioners to go back and meet up with the governor. I think that would be a very important meeting. And I think that ever commissioner would be invested in doing something like that. So I know I would be. I think that, let's see, what else? That's pretty much the things that I had. Thank you again. Okay, I guess we're going to move into executive session. Can I have a motion to move in the executive session? And then we'll, what, be about 30 minutes? Do you think 30 minutes?
Yeah, I don't think we'll need that long.
What do you think?
That'd be, I think we could probably, 20 minutes, easy.
Okay, so we can come back at 10 after?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session in accordance with the State of New Mexico Open Meetings Act, section 10-15-1-88, which authorized the board of county commissioners to go into executive session to discuss real property. This will be sealed bids for properties located in 307 Wayne Vista. Curtis Smith returning at 10 after 11 a.m.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Hudson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Can we take about a three-minute break to go to the restroom?